This guy's, he says Pittsburgh, but he's more, he's looking like.
Mark, Mark Stricker, yeah.
Okay, is everybody here?
We thought it'd be less exciting just to do an upgrade. So we started talking with him and this is what he came up with, which is about, about half as much as the other folks wanted. And they, they said for three years, you need to pay so much for three years, but after that, they didn't even give you a price.
Did Mark do the original website?
Yes, like about three or four years.
I'm gonna call the meeting. Okay. I'd like to call the Balfont Borough Council Work Session Meeting to order. It's Monday, July 17th. Welcome everyone to the Borough Council Work Session. No council action is taken during the work session. So right now, we're just gonna go into items for discussion. And tonight, we have Mike Scott here from DBI, Board President, with a 15-minute presentation.
15 minutes?
Yeah, or less, or less, Mike. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you. Printed out some material for everybody if you don't mind. Part of my time passes.
That's fine.
There's probably too many there.
That's fine.
Here's the original agreement that we have.
Thank you. Can I read it?
Yeah, we're talking about down here, that's how much.
I remember that.
We want Sean up here with the whole, is she up to reattach on the ground?
I think she just went and took her camera off.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Good, thanks. So for those of you who do not know me, my name is, is Mike Scott. I'm currently the DBI President. I was hoist into this role a few months ago. Against my better judgment, I agreed to take over the President role. But some of you may be aware, we had some turnover a few months ago in our staffing, board members, which is why I, I agreed to, to take over the President's role. So I just wanted to give you guys a quick update of what, of what we have going on and then allow you to ask some questions, but so.
I'm, I'm sorry. Can you hear us?
Oh, I forgot to mute. No, I can't.
I didn't know if she's talking to us.
Oh, I don't know.
She can't hear him? I guess Mike will ask you to speak a little louder, I guess. She can't. Should we have a remote person?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I'll, I'll try to speak up. So my, my business card is on there. My, my day job is, I work for Arise Federal Credit Union. I'm their Chief Lending Officer there. But all my contacts and information is on there if anyone ever wants to reach out via email, my cellphone, you know, feel free. But some of the, I'm just gonna kinda go over some of the things I provided here. So we, we hired somebody to, for those of you who know Jenny Lynn, we were hired, hired someone to replace Jenny Lynn. Her name is Kathleen Amon. She was most recently at Climb Nittany, which is like a rock climbing company there, based out of Bullsburg. Actually, they're based out of, I think Columbus, Ohio. They have, they have locations all over. But I'm not gonna go through her resume. I, I gave it to you guys, you could go over it. I think she has the background and the, and the experience. I think she's gonna be a really good, a really good fit for us. She's, she's starting on, on Monday. I also provided you with the, her job description. And so you'll, you'll notice that the, the position is called a Community and Programming Manager, which is a slight deviation from the, the last role or title that Jenny Lynn had, which was Main Street Manager. Reason why we decided to do that, really because we're working on our, our fourth employee now in four years. And so we felt there was just, something wasn't lining up with what the expectations were for an employee and what the requirements and expectations are of a Main Street program. I'm by no means an expert on the Main Street program, but there are certain things that PDC and DCD, you know, require you to do whenever you're a Main Street program. One of them is, you have five or six different committees, with five or six different committee chairs. And part of the responsibility of a Main Street manager, or anybody, is to, to work with those committees, keep them on task, you know, make sure we're not working in silos, they all communicate. And that's, that's been a challenge. And not necessarily for the employee, but it's just, it's hard to find volunteers, really. To find five people who wanna chair a committee, recruit people for their committees, get together on a regular basis, put in these work sessions. And so we struggled a little bit with that. And so we, we wanted to avoid, this time around, putting someone in a position and setting them up for failure. So one of the main differences here is, is a little bit of springboard oversight. I think everyone here is probably aware of what springboard is. We feel strongly, it's a great asset to the community, but someone has to, someone has to operate it, right? I can't, I'll joke a little bit, but I mean, I can't take calls that the AC's not working and they're out of toilet paper anymore. So we need someone who's gonna devote at least a little bit of their time to make sure that springboard is operating effectively, that we're, we're getting the programming that we need for small businesses. And so that, that's why we decided to deviate a little bit. We are still very fully engaged with PDC and DCD. In fact, one of our board members was just at their, down at the PDC conference in Scranton. It was a four-day conference. And she actually spoke as a presenter on behalf of DBI. We still have a good relationship with them, we still communicate with them. I think that they have been willing to overlook some of our Main Street program shortcomings because we've, we've been a real example of success. A lot of people are looking at Balfont and saying, there's a lot of, a lot of good things going on there. And so they've been, they've been kinda gracious with their time and the resources that they've allowed us to use from PDC. Ultimately, I, I think we wanna get down, back down the path where we're a formal partner of theirs. Now that Kathleen is on board, between now and the end of the year, we have a couple main priorities. One is, we did, we did not have an event this year so far, so probably all familiar with the Under the Lights event. Just did not have the resources and the manpower to pull it off. I mean, it's, it's run by all volunteers and we just, just couldn't do it. I, I know there, there are lots of people who've been pretty vocal that they're disappointed, they love the event, we love the event too, we understand that. But one of the, one of Kathleen's top priorities is going to be to, to put on some type of event, event between now and the end of the year. Probably isn't gonna be what we've done historically down on the waterfront, two days, all the food trucks. Hopefully, we'll do something a little bit more scaled down between now and the end of the year. You may, may be familiar, there's a mural project happening right now. And so we would love to tie in like a mural unveiling with, with an event. Maybe we call it Under the Lights, maybe we do something else, but, but it's a big fundraiser for us, right? So our, our budget relies on having some type of, of event to basically to balance our budget. The other priority we have going into next year is we, we have to get our board together and do some strategic planning. From an income standpoint, you know, we have to figure out, you know, where's the money coming from? Is it events? Is it grants? Is it memberships? Whether it's business memberships, individual memberships, getting sponsors. For instance, my company, Arise, has made a three-year commitment to springboard. We're actually providing $12,000 a year for three years to provide programming for springboard. So something that we feel strongly about supporting small businesses, we need to find more of that, that kinda stuff, right? You guys have been very gracious with your support financially and otherwise of DBI, but you know, I understand that that is, is gonna, it's going away. The MOU says it's supposed to go away next year, but that's something I wanted to talk about too. That's kind of in a nutshell what, what we have going on. We're, we're excited to have a full-time person in place. We're kinda, we're getting back on the track after, after being off, off the rails for a couple of months, but I think we're in a good place right now. Be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Does anybody have questions for Mike?
How's the composition of the board, Mike? Has it been consistent, or are you still, are you having any attrition, or has it been pretty much the same people from the get-go?
Yeah, we have some new, some new board members. Holly Wilson just joined our board, you know, she's, she's the Financial Administrator for the stage of Talleyrand, who DBI is partnering with. So we thought it was a good idea to bring, to bring Holly on board. Another newer board member is Emily Boone, she's a local business owner. This time of year is really tough for people, schedules, vacations, and so we've, we've had some trouble getting a quorum together in person. And so we've, we've done some, some voting via email on, on some items that were important. But I think our board right now is 11 people. We'd like to have 15, so we have some open board seats, and we're, we're always trying to recruit.
So if the folks who left, I think they, they started another group with Safe Streets projects, things like that. And how are you guys working together on that, or is it them and you?
Are you referring to the safe routes to parks?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that was a DBI initiative, and when we had our turnover, they reached out to us and said, hey, would we be willing to transfer DBI's responsibility for that to this other organization? And we gladly said, yeah, we don't have the resources right now to handle this. You know, there, there were some requirements, because I believe there was $10,000 in funding, but with that funding, you know, came requirements. We, we were not in a position at the time to fulfill those requirements. They had already given us $5,000, which we returned. And as far as, as we're, with the status, I think they have a, a public engagement event tomorrow night at the Gamble Mill, which I'm planning to go to. So I'm hoping to learn, learn what's, what's going on with them. But yeah, we're, we're happy to help them. DBI's happy to help them in any way that we can to promote it, and it's a great, it's a great program. Hopefully it's successful.
Well, they, they have three events.
One was today, there's one on Wednesday.
Yeah, there's two tomorrow.
And there's, yeah.
There's from, one from 1:00 to 3:00, and then a public engagement from 5:00 to 7:00, and then also in August, there's gonna be a community.
Is that something you're not aware of? You, you were not aware of that?
I'm aware of the public engagement tomorrow night at 5:00 o'clock, that's what I was.
But that's the only one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Did you want?
Well, they're waiting, the August one, they don't have formal approval from council yet, so they haven't done publicity.
Okay, okay. I'm just helping Randy out here, hoping that you're, you're being a part of it if you choose to be, yeah.
Yeah, we, we've offered to be a part of it, you know. If they wanna reach out to us and ask for help, we're, we're happy to help.
Okay. Any other questions? I, I don't wanna go over the time limit, but we did, we have an action item tonight that was surprising to me.
Oh.
And Evelyn Mattis said that you could probably answer any questions in regard to the farmer's market request.
Okay.
So the action item.
I'll do my best.
Listen, they're asking to close Howard Street between Allegheny Street and Locust Lane.
Yes, Evelyn and I met with three individuals from the farmer's market that is down at the Gamble Mill right now, and they're just, they're losing vendors, they're losing foot traffic, that, that location does not work for, for them anymore. And so we proposed a couple locations, the diamond being one of them. None of them are in favor of, of the diamond location. They say it's difficult to get in and out of there with their trucks and all their, the goods that they're selling, and they'd much rather have another location, which is why we suggested the Howard Street.
Okay, good. So in my, I initially contacted Ellen a couple of months ago.
Mm-hmm.
And asked about re-organizing the farmer's market.
Mm-hmm.
And she said, well, I'll get back to you. I didn't hear a thing from her after that. I come to the agenda meeting on Thursday, and we didn't discuss this at all. And then late Thursday or Friday, the request came in to close the street. So I was a little disappointed that there wasn't any communication with any council member before this request was made.
Okay.
And I'm disappointed there isn't a farmer's market vendor in this audience right now. And, and they put this on you, I guess, to, to, to make the case. Number one, she said there was a crisis mode for these vendors, that they wanna sell their product. And the, the diamond is open today. It's open. And I don't know why they're not using it.
Yeah, from what I understand, there is a bit of this between the growers and the non-growers.
Well, see, you know.
Like, I agree with you.
If there's a crisis, and I have product to sell, I'm gonna go and sell it where I can today, and then we'll work the details out tomorrow.
Yeah.
I know folks don't wanna hear this in the public, but I'm gonna say.
It's been said over and over for years about this.
So I have a lot of questions of who is the organization? Who is the leader? Who is it?
Their, their name escaped you right now. We met with three people who have been longtime farmer's market attendees.
Down there at the gamble.
So did the gamble mill ask them to leave, or they're leaving?
I don't believe so, no.
They're leaving on their own now?
Yeah, well, they're losing, they're losing vendors because the foot traffic down there is very poor apparently.
Sure, okay.
And so they're, they're just looking for an alternative, yeah.
I get that. There's traffic through the center of this town on Saturday mornings all the time.
Yeah, I drove through Saturday morning.
So, so the longtime vendor there now, is he welcome to the new site?
I do not know the answer to that. I, I don't see why not, but, yeah.
What's the criteria to sell the products?
They would prefer it be a market that, that only growers participate in, not people who are going and buying.
From a wholesale.
From a wholesale and bringing it to the farmer's market.
Do you think that happens at other farmer's markets?
I am not an expert in farmer's markets.
Okay, I was, I was at the farmer's market at the church. I'm not grilling your mic, but this needs to be exposed. I mean, it, so it's an Amish group at the Missionary Alliance Church on Whitehall Road. I stopped on Saturday, walked through. A month ago, there were blueberries out, and I said, are these fresh local? Oh, no, they came from New Jersey or Maryland. But it says fresh produce, and it is fresh.
Yeah.
Because they drove it and they bought it at a wholesaler and put it on the counter. This week, I, they had cantaloupes, stacks of them. I said, boy, these are look good. Yeah, they are good. They have split open sample. Where'd these come from? Maryland eastern shore. It's the farmer's market, okay? So there's a give and take here. You can do full disclosure at your stand, locally grown, not locally grown. But it, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me, that when they're in a crisis mode and the space is there and nobody's using it. And I'll do anything I can to provide more space on the diamond. I'm one vote on this council. But I counted the spaces. There, there's one guy that's been there for 30 years, and I'm not gonna discard him because these folks can't work together.
Yeah, there has to be some type of compromise.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But I'm not hearing that. So I'm gonna have a difficult time approving this request. Number one, the bank has, needs access every Saturday morning.
Yeah, I know.
I think it's a great idea, but if I'm in a crisis mood and I wanna sell product, I'm, I'm gonna go where I can for now.
Yeah.
Until we work some kinks out. And another comment was, well, they may have a bag full of meat, you know, that's 10 pounds, and they don't wanna carry it to the municipal lots. You know what? If I'm the vendor, I'm gonna say, you, you go get your car, you drive up here, I'll meet you at the curb, I'll put it in your car for you. So some of the, the conversation was pretty lame to me. I, I like the idea of, of expanding and maybe having entertainment, but I'm darn sure I'm gonna use the space that's available if I need to today, this Saturday. They can, they can set up there. So.
Yeah, it sounds like it's back, back to the drawing board.
I agree with Doug. I think there's some type of sense of elitism for the home growers versus the buyers, the people who wanna buy the produce. Personally, why not just advertise as you're set up together that you, this is homegrown?
Yeah.
And people can choose.
Yeah.
I mean, it's free enterprise, why not?
Exactly.
I think they brought this whole situation onto themselves by pulling themselves away.
Yeah, I'm not here to make a case.
I know that, Mike.
They asked us to help out.
No, that's, that's why I was sort of discouraged to find out that you were put on the spot to do, to answer these questions.
That's, that's okay.
You know, it's, it's.
So what, how about I propose this? We, we go back to the drawing board with them. I think the compromise would, at least in my eyes, would have to be that they would have to live harmoniously with, with the non-growers and find a space that's more suitable.
That would be my suggestion.
Yeah.
And, and I would, I would absolutely use the space that's available this Saturday.
Yeah.
And if there's not enough space, we'd love it, because we'll figure out a place to put you.
Yeah, I can, I can pass that message along to them.
Okay.
I think those two groups split sometimes.
They did. The same, the same issues, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, thank you. Yes, go ahead.
There are a lot of us that would like to see a big farmer's market downtown on the diamond. People do come downtown, and it's, it's good for the, the people that are in the farmer's market, also for all of downtown, and for people to come see our town.
Absolutely, yeah.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not in favor of two farmer's markets, you know? Come on, man, this, it just doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Okay, I've, I've said my piece.
You duly noted.
Thank you.
Mike, thank you very much for being.
Yeah, welcome. Any other questions before?
If we, if we can help you out in any way, you know that we're absolutely committed to do that.
I appreciate that.
Early on, you said something about the agreement. Do you have any ideas on what you wanted to talk about?
Yeah, so I mean, if you read the MOU, I mean, it specifically states Main Street Manager. I mean, there's, there's no question it does, and if, you wouldn't have to poke too hard to say that we're probably not fulfilling our end of the agreement 100%. I included as part of the information I gave you, a printout from the PDC, I'm sorry, the DCD website of what the Main Street Manager, what their duties look like. And I, I think our, our new job description meets those pretty clearly, even though we're not calling it a Main Street Manager. And as I mentioned earlier, I mean, we're, we're still very much engaged with, with the Main Street program and PDC and DCD, and we have a great relationship with them. And, but yeah, we, we appreciate your support, and if, if this group is willing to continue to support us, we would appreciate that too, but.
Mike, I'll just add, I've been reading.
Mike, I'll just add. I've been reading this. It says that beginning in 2020, 100% of the mainstream managers' time will be working directly for DBI and performing the functions as designated by DBI's board of directors. So it sounds to me like that that's the authority that you guys have.
Yeah, just, thanks for pointing that out, Don. Yeah, I wanted to be transparent with you guys.
Yeah.
It wasn't lost on me that we have an agreement in place and you've supported us and we're going to continue to do, you know, what we think is in the best interest of our fund.
And I think this council will continue to do what we've committed to do.
I appreciate that.
For you guys.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I'll buy you a beer.
Don't, don't resign.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, where are we at? Governor's Park Baseball Field usage. Oh, boy, another one.
So I can sort of give some background, then we can see where this goes. But, you know, the field was finished. We just did the final walkthrough and all that. But of course, you know, the field is a very expensive field. We did get money to buy the field to do the grant, you know, do the whole project through a grant source. But there's no money to maintain the field. That has to be done by local taxes and/or fees. So obviously, this is a very expensive investment that has taken place. And, you know, as staff, we want to protect the investment. So we, we have locked the facility and right now, we have really no policy to do that. We're just did it. And we would like to get to the point where we have a policy that is approved by council that says, you know, do we lock it? Do we not lock it? Do we let people practice as they wish? Do we only allow people who have signed maybe a warranty letter or certificate? Or just like we do with other parks, you know, the insurance waiver, all those things. And then put down money and maybe the money be set aside for maintenance of the field over the long term. You know, there's been a couple of recent issues that kind of raised a couple of flags. You know, people getting in through one way or another and using the field without really formal permission. So I, and I think Doug, you know, you as a council president, wanted to get this on the agenda to see where it leads as well. But we're kind of in somewhat of a no man's land, no person's land by not having a policy that tells us as staff what to do. So we're looking for guidance, you know, go, obviously go with the majority. I can just tell you, there's an expense. It's either going to be paid by user fees or people paying real estate taxes through their, their real estate. You know, the parks, different, you know, expenses that are on their tax bill. But I'll start that, I'll leave it go and see what discussion we, we end up with.
So what do we have? If we want to change this a little bit?
Do we have to add this to like the fees schedule?
Well, right now, we have a working fee for formal tournaments, formal users that have gotten permission. It's $250 a day for use of the field. We have no, I mean, that's not even, hasn't really even been approved by council, although it was a previous number we used in the past. So maybe it was a couple of years ago, but that should be looked at, you know, that number. Is it, is it reasonable? Is it under? Is it over? What, you know, what the going rate should be? I can tell you, they told us for every 10 hours of use on the field, somebody needs to go maintain the field. Throughout the summer, we're cutting the grass, we're maintaining the field. You can't have metal cleats on the field. You can't do anything that will damage the field, you know. Types of equipment, you know, can't be placed on the field. We have no parks manager. We've never had a parks manager. We don't have somebody to manage the field, rent the field. We do not have that person. All we do is cut the grass and just kind of touch up things. That's what we do. So right now, during the ball season, the school paid to have the field maintained through our work or they reimbursed us. And it was an agreed upon relationship. Now that the school, the baseball season's over, we don't have that. Really, the user fee really goes to help cover the expense of having our guy go out and maintain and dress up the field, do the lining, put the black rubber back down where it needs to go. And of course, we are cutting the grass probably every week, regularly throughout the summer.
And we purchased a greens groomer.
We did, yeah.
Runs on the turf to.
You got to brush up the gra, the fake, you know, the artificial turf. And you got to sprinkle the black powder rubber stuff where the fields.
How do the other ball fields handle, handle it? Like the Little League or Teenage League?
Well, they're, they're different fields.
I know that, I know that. I'm asking, how are they, how are they set up?
Well, I can, I can, now, Don, I'm, Don, you can chime in. The Teenage League, I believe, is, you know, self-serve or it's only used by the Teenage League group.
Pretty much. And the Teenage League always had a board. And now they, they have a smaller board because of, you know, the Teenage League's not as robust as it once was. The Little League still has an active board of directors. They control the three Little League fields.
Now, I don't know if their fields are locked. The Teenage League field is not locked. It doesn't have a fence continuously around it. So I can't speak to that. We have.
There is a, there is a lock gate at the end of John Montgomery Ward Lane.
Okay.
We, we do lock it or we have a potential lock it, but because of their usage, we don't lock it.
And then like the kids from the neighborhood could walk in.
Yes.
We have practice fields, a practice field out of Governor's Park that anybody can use. And that grass is cut too. But, you know, if someone messes up the grass, we would just plant, put some grass seed back in. It's not as expensive as trying to keep up with an artificial turf.
We've made it known to the school district that, and we hope that they're, you know, starting to consider budgeting, you know, $10,000 to $20,000 a year because this turf's lifespan's about 10 years. And it's probably in the $300,000 to $400,000 area to replace. Now, as long as we're under warranty, we feel, you know, we feel pretty good at least for a number of years. But, you know, at times, they might have to come in and do some patching, they said, which isn't a big deal. But when they do get to the full replacement, it's going to be expensive. Of course, the high school's got the football field with the same turf. And I don't think they allow anybody on that except the sporting events.
I don't know. Do you know, Rita?
I think they allow the public on the track. I don't think they're allowed on the field.
Okay.
I think we're going to have a policy on it so that people understand where they can play or where they can't. If you already have a field there and you're maintaining it, that anybody can use, that's great. That's another option for them. I don't see why, why we need to take the chance on, you know, somebody getting on there really messing it up.
It just takes one person. That's, that's the problem. I always said 90, 90% of the people that are using it, using it the right way, but that's not who we're worried about. It's that one, that one person that goes out there and does some damage and then it's it for everybody.
Does anybody know what Bald Eagle does or Pence Valley? Do they have a policy?
We're welcome to do some research.
I don't think their, their fields are chained off or anything. The football field is, but I don't think the baseball field.
I think it's a little bit different too, Doug. With the school district, they've got more, I mean, they're more control oriented than we're, we're talking here. The reason I think we've got a problem is everyone sees it as a public park and I think that's the difference.
Basically did all that work for the school district.
Yes.
You know, they didn't follow up on what they said they were going to do.
Right. But we were lucky enough to get the grant money from our state senate.
Right now, we have no agreement about set, for them to set aside money.
Yeah.
To mainly replace it.
Right.
And we're only hopeful, don't they?
So, so that being said, is that lease, does it, is it expired now? I can't remember.
Now, I don't think so, Doug. As a matter of fact, I'd have to go back and look. It may be written that it, you know, it's, it's on a continual basis until someone makes the determination that they want to end the lease.
I think we need to have another look at it for maintenance.
Sure.
Not that they're going to have the total maintenance, but.
I would agree. I think it should be reexamined.
Okay.
What we can do is see what some of the other artificial turf fields, what their policies are for usage and get a copy of the original school district agreement in front of everybody.
Okay. And until then, what's, what's, what's our sort of advice or helpful advice to our administration on the policy of use of the field? Do they keep it locked or do they allow folks to come in and use the field?
I would say it needs to be locked. I mean, that was part of the purpose, was to, to lease it to different tournaments, things like that also. And I think we have a responsibility to keep it as good as possible and not pass any of the maintenance on to the taxpayers.
And with the school district using it for a couple of months and somebody goes in there in between games and, you know, then they can imagine what the hell happened there.
Yes.
Yeah. The thing is, is with individual teams like the Legion, you know, I, we can talk to the coach and say, okay, here's the rules. Make sure that you're, you know, the kids are abiding by them. The tournament comes in, we're, you know, they fill out the form. We can talk to them and we're providing all the information in a, in that so that it's, they know directly what they can and can't do. What we can't control are the individuals going in and out. That's, that's where the issue is.
And I think that's important.
Any thoughts, Deb, Rita?
Well, I think that if this is not considered a generally public area, it is part of the school district, school district's responsibility, then it needs to be controlled in some way as far as unauthorized people being on the property. If you know who's, you know, the tournaments that come in, sign up, we know who it is, they have the information. And the smaller groups that ask to use the facilities have the information and then there is some control over it. But it's not fair to, the big groups that come in and want to use a facility if it's been chewed up by somebody who's not using it responsibly.
Any thoughts, Rita?
Even if it's locked, they still have the opportunity to call the office.
Yeah.
And ask if they can use it. That way they know who's using it. So it's not like it's totally off limits to everybody. They just have to take one.
So are, are we saying if an individual wants to use it, they come into the office and ask for permission? Is that what you're suggesting or?
I'm thinking like a group that wants to use it for practice or something. I'm not very sports oriented, so I'm not sure.
I think anybody that calls and asks about this should either be directed to fill out an application so it can be looked at.
I don't want to.
And, you know, it is what it is, Doug. If you don't try to control it, that's any way we can control is to know who's interested in it and what they want to do. And if deciding that we don't want that ball field used outside of its purpose for, you know, league games and things like that, then I think that's where we got to go.
I'm trying to give the staff a clear direction. And, and right now, I'm hearing keep it locked unless it's a paid tournament organization. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's the consensus. There's no motion to.
I know, there's no, I know there's no vote. Is there any other?
That's what I would like to see.
Are you hearing the same thing?
Yes, that's what I would like to see.
We have three weeks between now and the next meeting. That should be enough time for us to get some research done.
Okay.
And come back and give you what we find.
Okay. All right.
But, yeah.
Let's move on.
Ten census for now.
Estimate for website refresh. Dawn or Ralph, whichever one. Do you have it in your packet, folks?
You know, this is like an ongoing project. Might have been part of one of my objectives for this year in discussion with these officers of council to try to get more information out to citizens. And we talked about using the website. We talked about ways to upgrade the website. Of course, everything is expensive, but anyway, the, the group or the company that upgraded our website three or four years ago, is this same group, local owner, local resident here based in Bellefonte, although it's a Pittsburgh address. They, they helped us three or four years ago. And as, as it says here, this is a refresh and an update to our existing website. They helped us really rebuild three or four years ago. So some of the major features that we were looking at was, you know, ways to get information out in the event of an emergency. So we talked about this, emergency banner information, using your smartphone more efficiently on our website, having things come up to the top, less scrolling, you know, save time for people.
I think part of it too, Ralph, was having access to the minutes.
Yes.
The agendas, the entire packets.
Yes.
For all of council, for the water authority, for the data, for all the, that it's easily accessible to anyone that wants to get that information.
Yes, so what a lot, we've looked at a couple of websites off and on, more than that, at other municipalities. And of course, you know, we, we have a small staff here. We don't have somebody that's called an engagement coordinator like some municipalities do. And they have a person that does this stuff, you know, in-house. We don't have that. But anyway, a lot of the websites, instead of you going and looking for the minutes for the council meeting or the water authority meeting, you check a box that you're interested in receiving the minutes. And then when they're posted, you know, I guess somehow automatically you get the copy in your email. So that's what you're buying. You're buying the efficiency. Instead of, you know, the person, the resident, the user, taking maybe a couple of minutes and looking for them or going to the website, they'll end up in your inbox through an email or something like that.
And currently, we don't have the capacity to actually have everything on there. So this increases capacity to allow for that as well.
Yeah, you know, we, we, everything has a cost, either staff or expense, website reworking or staff additional time. We were, you know, initially trying to look at ways not to impact both, you know, not to impact the staff time and not to impact the costs in our budget for upgrades. You know, we looked at, we thought we were going to find, you know, least, less expensive ways to do that, but we have not. We looked at a couple of different companies that specialize in municipal websites. And turns out, they were more expensive than our local company that we worked with.
Well, and quite frankly, when we had the, you know, it was kind of like a webinar, we, when we looked at it, we were saying, it looks just like our current website. So it made us think, look, maybe, maybe our website, folks could just do some upgrades and get some of these nice features that we wanted. Turns out that they could. I think, you know, just from a financial standpoint, you see the price, it's approximately $11,000. But having said that, where would we get that funding? We talked to Lori. We could, we, the money is in the general fund if this, if this is a priority of council. This is something that you want us to get done. We can move on this. However, it will, I mean, we'll just have to redirect some funds from the general fund elsewhere that we're not going to spend it this year.
Is there training involved in this as well, what you get to set up?
Not, not too much, you know. The, this company does the reprogramming and all of that. And then it's really user friendly, you know, check, going in, checking a box that you want to receive such and such, mainly minutes and agendas, those types of things. The rest of it's going to be like notice, notifications, you know, emergency notifications. You checked a box, you want notifications for the water authority or borough, borough business or refuse, daily changes or whatever. You know, or maybe you'll get those anyway, but you must have signed up for notifications. So other than that, it's, it's pretty straightforward.
Well, if there's a one, you know, to set up Google Analytics to receive monthly report, is that something that the borough would receive about the activity and?
Yes, we would receive the report. I think some, some of our discussions in other work sessions, someone asked, could we get that? Could we tell how many people's using the website? And so we asked these people the same question.
Yeah, I think that would be a useful. Yeah. I think that would be a useful tool, especially if you set up something that allows people to receive notifications by email, then you would know how much interest there is in that service and if it's worth continuing.
Sure.
Julie, you were in that meeting. If you, if we're not, if we're forgetting something that you think we should be adding, you can, you can step up and say something. I think you were there that day when we had the meeting.
Yeah, I think we covered a few, not to recall.
Okay. We've been talking about the website since I've been on council.
Well, we redid it here through a committee process.
I know, but it was still difficult to go through and find it. That's the problem.
Websites are just constantly evolving. I mean, you want something that's wrong, then you have to fix it, and you realize somebody, you want something else, and you keep adding to it. And then you're always trying to make it easier for your public to use. But I think having those emergency notifications right on the front main screen be helpful. And yes, if you could get that notification, like, I want that specific notification to pop up in my email instead of trying to remember going, oh, wait, I can go to the website and look that up, because I don't always like to go there. And I know before being here, I never thought to go to the website to look for information.
Yeah.
I don't think we're asking for a decision or anything type. This is just, we wanted to get some information, give it some thought. And if it turns out that, you know, this is the direction that you want us to go, then let us know.
I think we'll go back, we'll talk to Mark or contact and get some, you know, maybe like what ifs, you know, what if we just did the notifications, or what if, you know, we just pared this down a little bit, maybe just did like the ADA compliancy and a few things at this point, you know, what kind of numbers would he be looking at? I just add to what Dawn said, you know, everything costs something. We would be taking something off the table to put this on the table. It's not that we have an extra $11,000 unmarked somewhere.
Right, right.
So if that's all right, we'll, we'll get some more information, take what you folks have said and...
That's, that's what I'm hearing from this council right now. Okay, great. Last item. We'll keep moving.
Okay. That's the sidewalks out in Parkview Heights. I did a little bit of research on this. You know, in 1965, the borough annexed...
May I add just for one second?
Yes, I'm sorry.
We received an inquiry from a resident in Parkview Heights. And we felt, as we should, answer some questions to that inquiry. So, and it was sort of, and I have it here in front of me, but help me out if I'm wrong. She, this person was thinking maybe we should add some sidewalks to some streets in Parkview Heights. So Mr. Stewart did some research and is going to give us a little history of the sidewalk policy and ordinance in Bellefonte Borough. Right? Am I close?
Yes.
Okay.
Let me see if I can find the email real quick.
Oh, yeah, I had it here. Oh, sorry, Ralph.
Well...
It's on the work session.
Well, part of it was around Parkview Heights Boulevard, the traffic light, which we're addressing through that project. We hope to have crosswalks there once the light is in so people can get across Zion Road. We think that, you know, when we go to that design phase, which we're, right now is in the survey phase, we will incorporate crosswalks at that intersection being Parkview Boulevard and Zion Road so that kids can get across Zion Road. Again, there'll be a formal traffic light there. So I think a lot of the concern was getting kids across Zion Road. But what I wanted to just cover with you is that in 1965, the borough, through an ordinance, annexed, which was the way it was done back then, they annexed or added on to the borough approximately 400 acres that was in Spring Township that became part of Bellefonte Borough. They did it, first a petition came into the borough. I could not locate that petition. So I'm not sure how it was worded. But anyway, about 400 acres, basically from, I'm going to say where the sidewalks stop in Parkview Heights. So you have High Street in, up to about Lewis Street in that area. After that, heading east, there's no more sidewalks. Same thing over by Center Street, same thing by Airport Road. The reason that is, is that area was all in the 400 acres that was annexed in in 1965. I was told early on as, you know, a young administrator, the Parkview Heights area was exempt from sidewalks. And that was the agreement, that when these folks were annexed in, that was the agreement. That's what I was told. And I guess more proof or evidence of that is in the 1990s, Parkview Heights Estates was fully developed. That's about 80 or 100 acres in behind Sylvan Circle, off of Summit Drive where Mr. Brineer lives. In that area, all that was added, went through the planning process, land development process. No sidewalks were added or made mandatory. All of our ordinances have, from day one, said the property owner is responsible for the sidewalks. A couple of places it said in our ordinances, if the applicant or property owner applied for sidewalks, this is what they do. They go through and meet the specification for building a sidewalk, but it wasn't the other way around where the borough went in and said, you're going to have sidewalks unless, there's only one, one area where there was a mandate for sidewalks. And that, they call it the 60% rule. And that this is in our ordinances as of today, or, you know, it still exists, that if 60% or more of the properties along a block face, that's from intersection to intersection on the same side of the road, that's a block face, if 60% of those properties or more have sidewalks, then the remaining properties must fill in and add sidewalks. That's the only mandate that we have on the books. Again, you know, so if a block face has no sidewalks, like in Parkview Heights, that's fine, no mandates. They could go, they could go that way until 60% have sidewalks, and then everybody on that block face would have to have them. But just, I wanted to give you some background. People like council member Joe Beagle would probably maybe give us some specifics, who was maybe here when some of the decisions were made. Now, Mr. Hurlacher, who was on councils, you know, since deceased, he was one of the ones that, it was very clear, said that, you know, when they were annexed, it was the Tanny Farm, Tanny Tract, the Beaver Tract, and the Biddle Tract were annexed. You know, there's some kind of agreement or some kind of understanding. There would be no sidewalks. And as of today, there's no sidewalks out there. Even if sidewalks were built, they would be the responsibility of the property owner. So something to keep in mind.
Right.
I don't know if you have any questions, but that's just a little bit...
That's what I was looking for, to make sure we get the right information out to the people who are requesting this. And it's going to be up to them to kind of take it, take it in their hands and see what they can do.
Okay. I can, you know, we, we'll, when we work with the design on the traffic light, we'll make it clear, we want, you know, crosswalks there, that intersection, which means probably some push buttons and things. But we're looking for that. I know they're at School Street, which is the next traffic light intersection. But we'll, we'll look at that one specifically. I'm sure, you know, when the school district comes through with the elementary school plans, we'll have a similar discussion about Airport Road. We haven't, I have not seen whether a light is warranted there yet or not. It looks like it's very possible it will be. But regardless, when that goes through the planning process, we can look at how kids would get back and forth across Bishop Street, Zion Road.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Well, I think I can adjourn the work session unless there's something else for folks. So at, what are we at? 7:22, this work session is adjourned. Seven twenty-two, this work session is adjourned. Thank you very much. So, I was doing a mini-triathlon with Kent At. Okay, I'd like to call the Monday, July seventeenth, Balfont Borough Council meeting to order. Everyone is welcome to council meeting. We'll do our best to start the council meeting on time and end it on time. Due to the room acoustics, please speak up when talking so the people can hear what you are saying. That includes us around the council table. All comments and reports should be kept to three minutes for a maximum. Right now, I'd like to do the pledge of allegiance in a rule called Moment of Silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call, please. Mr. Brineer.
Here.
Mr. Brackbill.
Here.
Ms. Clayton.
Here.
Ms. Dan.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. McKean.
Here.
Ms. Purnell.
Here.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Here.
Ms. Hostie Vacy is excused and Mayor Johnson is excused. Okay. Additions to the council meeting agenda. In accordance with Act sixty-five of two thousand and twenty-one, if a matter is not on the agenda, council may take official action on it with the following exceptions. Council can act on matters relating to potential or real emergencies. Council may add a matter of agency business to a agenda through a majority vote. The council must state why the action item is being added to the agenda. Council may vote to add an action item or items to the agenda at this time if there's a motion. Yes, Randy?
I'd like to add, we had a meeting with the Balfont Fire Department Executive Committee last Thursday. We made some decisions to that point. We left, we needed the weekend for some other finalizations of some things. So what I want to do is add, add this, we're looking for approval from the Borough Council to approve our recommendations that if we can put that under new business, then we can do that.
Approved.
How we just say emergency process.
Sure. Approved recommendations?
Yeah, you have to vote on his request.
See, you just.
To the fire department.
Would you restate that, please?
To approve the recommendations from the Fire Executive Committee.
Okay.
From the Balfont Fire Executive Committee.
That's your motion. Is there a second to Randy's? Thank you. Those in favor, rule call vote, please. Oh, any discussion on Randy's addition to the agenda? Okay. Mr. Brineer.
Yes.
Mr. Brackbill.
I'm gonna have to abstain because I'm a part of that committee.
I don't, okay, I don't think you have to, but.
I do, it's in the, it's in the bottom.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson. Yes. Ms. McKean.
She's muted.
Okay. Shawna? She's lost sound since the meeting began. Okay. Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms., that's it. Okay. We're good to go. We'll add that to the agenda. Now it's public comment time. The officers of council have decided to try to combine agenda and non-agenda public comment. This public comment period is for oral comments regarding any action items listed on this meeting agenda or any comments in general. No deliberations will be entered into by council at this time. If you're in attendance tonight, I hope you've all signed in. Come to the podium at the appropriate time. State your name, address, and which item you are speaking about. We would like to limit your comments to three minutes. And Mr. Halderman will be timing the three minutes. So if there's anyone who would like to speak, please come to the podium now and identify yourself. You got the time? Good evening.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Vanessa Casio. I'm with Safe Routes Partnership. We are a national organization working with communities across the country to make it easier to bike and walk. For the last several years, we have worked with dozens of communities to develop a roadmap to make their parks safe, convenient, and accessible for people of all ages and abilities. This year, Balfont is one of our four communities selected to participate in Safe Routes to Parks. So congratulations.
Thank you.
We've been so impressed by the growing support and enthusiasm there is here for making Tallyrand and Missoula Parks destinations, not only for people that live here, but for people who have the pleasure of visiting. Earlier today, we had a community conversation at the Chamber of Commerce in Tallyrand Park. And we had about twenty different community members, including local businesses, community residents, and the energy in the room was palpable. What we heard is that community members want to build on this town's legacy and find safe ways to get to parks that are truly gems. And while also working together to address the very real challenges to getting safely to those places, we heard real fears of crossing streets like Water and High Street and safety concerns on South Potter Street. The good news is, is that we have a toolbox of strategies and there is unprecedented funding at the state and federal level for these types of projects. All you need to do is to identify projects you want to see happen in the coming years. And the decisions you make now will dictate the vitality and economic prosperity of Balfont in the future. There is growing community support for this initiative and a growing coalition of people here who want to work on this, plus a network of people at the region who want to support as well. At the state level, natural resources, transportation, and public health have all come to the table and are ready to invest in this work. And they can't act until they know what your priorities are, which means going through a process of identifying and documenting what is important to community members. We are really looking forward to seeing you at tomorrow's events that Gina will be talking about later tonight. And if you can't make it, we really do encourage you to connect with and follow up with the local steering committee leading this work. So thank you so much for your time. We look forward to seeing you tomorrow.
Thank you, Vanessa, for being here. Others who would like, yes, sir? Oh?
Good evening.
Evening.
My name's Kevin Raymond. I recently purchased the property up on five hundred block of East Beaver Street, five twenty-three East Beaver Street. Love the town of Balfont, love the people, my neighbors. I've really had a great experience since I've been here. I'm a longtime supporter of farmers markets. I used to be involved in the market up in the State College area. I frequented pretty much every market in the area. Market we have here, I think, could be really good. I know there's, people I talk to don't know much about it. It's been tougher to find, and I've interviewed a lot of people, my immediate neighbors, and they don't know much about it. When I talk to the people at the market, their concern is maybe people in Balfont wouldn't support a market. I think the location is a challenge for them now. Definitely, marketing is a challenge for them. I know there's some question about what types of markets there are. Really, there's, the market that's down here is part of center markets and part of their bylaws are that it's producer only. You can't wholesale someone else's product. And it's just to make sure that the product that you're offering is what you can promise because you've raised it. In State College, there's one that is a farm market where it's not producer. The rest of them are producers. The one that's down over in the gamble mill is producers. And there's a value to a consumer like myself to know the methods that are being used to raise the food. I know there's not GMOs and I know the methods that they're using. So I'd really love to see if the discussion about the market and moving the market, especially with the idea of bringing more walking traffic into downtown Balfont. I've been Friday in the font down Howard Street. It's great to mill around and, you know, frequent some of the other businesses as well. So I really think, especially with the bed and breakfast that we have in area, it's quaint, it's great. Some vendors that are there, I thoroughly, I frequent that, I shop there every week. So if we could somehow make that happen, that would mean, I think, a lot to the area business-wise, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Yes, sir?
I knew some of you people don't know all of you. I'm Bill Shuey. I used to own Land Realty Group here in Balfont. I founded that. I've owned properties in Balfont, rental properties, since nineteen eighty-eight. I think it's probably, you've lived here before that. I don't know if any of the rest of you have. It's, that's a long time. Now, when we had a meeting here, the last time I was here was when Cog was in here. And they said that they were gonna go over, we were gonna go over some things and do some things, and then they turned around, they passed it the same night. Okay? Which, which the people that owned the properties didn't appreciate at all, not at all, because there were certain things, there's certain things that are different between State College and Balfont. And that's, that's what we were saying. Now, I found out about this thing this afternoon. I've been in the hospital and had some medical problems. And I had someone call me today about this. I don't know how you can make the owners responsible for giving utilities to, I, I can't give utilities. My utilities, I pay, I pay the ones to the borough and I pay the other utilities and I do the maintenance on the property. But the electric is by, and it's electric heat in my properties, it's exactly by the people that live there. And if you don't believe me, come down, go downtown. I own, I own Land Realty Group building down there on one thirty-nine West High. Across the street there, the old, the big building across the street.
Right.
They, if you don't believe it, in the wintertime, go down there and look at the windows that are open, because someone else is paying for it, you know? Now, if they want to leave the windows open on my place, I don't care, they can leave them open, but they're gonna pay for it. I don't have anything to do with that, you know? And it has to do with the use and stuff like that. That's one thing, Mr. Shuey.
Bill, what are you referencing there? What are you referencing there?
I'm referencing the tenants, we're responsible to give them twenty-four months of utility payments.
Bill, Bill, that, all that's asking for is if your tenant moves out, that you have a record so that the new tenant.
I don't have a record.
Yeah, we, I know that. And I'm, full disclosure, I'm a landlord as well.
Okay.
So, so when a new tenant, we're not supposed to be interacting with, but I, I think you might be confused on what they're asking for. What they're asking for is if you have a new tenant that comes to rent your apartment, they have some idea of what the past utility bills were.
They can call West Penn Power themselves, okay? It's not up to me.
Well, it's not that you're paying, you won't have to pay.
It's not up to me to provide that to them either.
Well, yeah, I, okay, I just, I just want you.
I don't think it is.
I just, no, I just want you to.
I just said some of these other things.
I just want you to understand, you're not gonna be responsible to pay the electric bill.
Oh, I will not pay the electric bill.
Yeah, yeah, no, no. It's, it's just a, a record for the new tenant to what they might expect to pay in utility bills is why that is.
Here's another one right here. No owner, agent, or manager shall accept any payment under written lease on the premises till the owner has given a full executed copy of the lease. Now, how about a deposit on something and the people aren't here? We take deposits. We make them pay for, for the, for us to go in there and, and check and see if they're creditworthy and stuff like that, too. Now, this saying we can't do that, I'm gonna do it no matter what.
Well, all I'm saying is, you, you need to make your comments and, and we'll listen and then we'll talk about it.
Okay.
But, so, I should not be interacting with you.
Okay. Let's, let's go into this other one. Exception, rent increases. Exception is Department of Housing and Urban Development. I don't have a problem with that because I won't rent housing and urban development anymore. That's it. There's another one. Return tenant outstanding security deposit as promptly as, as possible prior to the day to move out. There is no way anybody's ever gonna get a deposit from me before they move out. And they, the way we have it written in our leases, you have thirty days to give it to. Then they have, it's up to them to give us the, their forwarding addresses and stuff, okay? I had one guy I gave, I gave a deposit to, and he went out and got in a U-Haul truck and started down the road, and I walked back in, shut the door in one of the bedrooms, and there was a hole through the door. I caught him down Mylesburg. You know? I mean, you shouldn't have to be under a gun like that. The thing is, you, you need time to take a look at your property, too, after they move out. The ones just moved out, now they scrape, scrape the doors and stuff. I mean, you know, they took, they took the, the window out of the, out of the, the storm door and just lay in there. I mean, come on. How are we supposed to know that when this stuff happens? Here's another one. Owner provides tenant the option to renew the tenancy at the market rate unless, unless it's, you're gonna rent it to a family member. Look, if, if I want to get rid of a tenant, I give them, they have the same right to give me sixty days' notice, I give them sixty days' notice. I don't have to give them any reason. That's, that's, I own the property. The people do not own the property. The other thing I did on my leases, I put in a thing about drugs and stuff in there. And sure as hell, I had one happen. Guy was selling drugs out of my property. I'm in Florida, it was the sixth of April, I'm in Florida, the cops are there, they got one cuffed in the front, one cuffed in the back, and I sent a guy up there to change the locks right then. That's, it's immediate expulsion right there. Changed the locks, the lady calls me the next day down in Florida and says she wants to get any of her stuff out. I said, well, I'll tell you what. I'll be back the twenty-ninth of April. Give me a call then, we'll take a look at it. All right? This is, you know, you cannot let people do things like that to your property. They were down there sticking heroin down, down the pilasters in the basement. I had to get out and throw concrete in there. Now, you know, come on. You have to look at, I've been doing this for so long that, and I can sit here and tear this whole thing apart, too. But I don't know what gives you the right to tell us what we have to do. Most of the people I know, we keep our properties up. And I just want you to, to look at this and because I can tell you some of the things I'm not gonna do. I mean, that's just all to it. I've been in this business too long. I've been a real estate broker for over fifty years, okay? And I do my stuff by the book and, and I want people to respect me, but you don't have to like me, okay? When I'm, when I'm renting a property, it's my property, it's not, and if I rent for somebody else, it's their property and I treat it like it's mine. That's where I come from. And I think, I think this is an overkill. You know? I, some of these things I will not do. That's all to it. I mean, if it, if it comes down to it, I'll sue you in court. You know, if this thing gets through the way it is, I don't.
Okay. Okay, Bill.
I don't have a problem.
Bill, thanks very much.
Thanks for talking here.
Yes, sir?
I'm Brian Whitmer. I hear about the property maintenance code as well. I got lots of issues with it. The first being that the permit fee going up twenty-five percent. I mean, they want to inspect once every three years and they're not there very long. And I know they send, applicate the permit papers out every year, but that's nothing. It's all computer generated. Just like Bill, I got issues with a lot of this stuff. The, I mean, starting to require us to have a separate permit for a fire alarm, I think, is unnecessary. Requiring the licensing of the professional fire alarm people, whether you buy it from them, they install it or they maintain it, they have to be licensed by the center region. The utility bill issued, section eight oh three point three.
Bill, Brian, could you speak up a little bit, please? Sorry, I'm sorry.
Section eight oh three point three, number seventeen, where it talks about those utility bills. I mean, it says that the existing tenant has to give me a copy of their utility usage sixty days from when they receive it. That's for the whole term of their lease. I, I mean, that's a lot of, a lot of paperwork. I understand the intent, but I, I don't come here much, but I've watched all this stuff online.
Sure.
When I get a chance. I listened to Walt when he was here, and he even stated Allegheny or West Penn Power won't give the amounts, they'll give usage.
You may have heard me ask them the question.
Yeah.
If you watched that.
Yes, I did.
I had the same concerns as you.
Yeah, they give usage.
Yeah.
Well, if people aren't smart enough to figure out how to do some math and figure out what, how much that's gonna cost them, I mean, the state's giving you the right to pick your utility provider based on different rates, so if you can't figure that out, maybe you shouldn't be renting. I mean, Walt says all the stuff in there was highlighted that was changed. I didn't go through it real quick. I didn't go through it real quick, but I found multiple sections that are new in this code that are not read, which is concerning to me as well. And then, section one oh one point six, tenants' rights, I mean, it's a life and safety code we're talking about here. I don't see where tenants' rights should be involved in a code like this. I know Harris Township, they were smart, and they opted out of section one oh one point six, and I think the board should do the same. And then, I mean, going back to when you first got the center region involved, because my understanding was to administer the code, take care of the inspection, so we don't have to have a guy here in staff to do that, which makes some sense, I guess. But now, they're, they're making all the rules. People in state college are making the rules for these people down here, with no representation. I even went through and looked at all the comments that center region got from the different people that made comments. I mean, I'm no expert on reading stuff, but a lot of that stuff seemed pretty technical to me, like these are all code officials, special interest group people, you know? It's, it's just, the one oh one point six definitely should not be included in the property maintenance code, and I think you should consider opting out of section eight oh three point three, number seventeen, for sure.
Brian, let me ask you this, if you don't, would you be willing to email that information, the codes that you're concerned about, the parts, to me or to the whole council? So I could, so I could, so I could look at those specifically? After, like, one oh one point six, I can't cite that right now. But, but you had more than that you were concerned about. Would you be willing to send those comments to me?
Yeah, I'll write them off to you. The licensing requirement for the fire alarm is eleven oh four point one.
Eleven oh four point one.
The alarm system permit, eleven oh five point one.
Eleven oh five point one.
I told you the eight oh three point three, seventeen. I mean, the whole section of one oh one point six.
Okay.
And then, just, just in general, I mean, one oh three point, or one oh one point three intent...
One oh one.
Says, the intent of this code is to ensure public health and safety.
Okay.
Tenants' rights, I don't think is a safety issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Chris Hench.
Hi, Chris.
I live in Julianne. I'm the president of the Belfont Farmers Market Association.
Nice to meet you.
I, newly appointed, the old leadership retired this year. I was in the field listening to the first session, and I just kind of wanted to come down and represent the market, and answer any questions, but now I understand it's not really a Q and A session. But we're just trying to bring a nice producer-only market to Belfont. My wife and I moved here a couple of years ago, partly because of Belfont. We saw it was a great, small town, and, you know, we're first-generation farmers, and we love Belfont, and we're just looking for a safe spot downtown to move the market. You know, the Gamble Mill parking lot has its issues with foot traffic. The Diamond has issues with pedestrian safety, from what I've heard, without it being a road closure. So we've been spending some months just trying to find a good solution, which was the Howard Street option. As far as closing it down and making the market kind of, you know, a weekly event, potentially music, food trucks, prepared food, it's, a farmer's market is supposed to provide a lot of things to the community, not just one vendor selling, you know, auction produce. That's not a farmer's market, so... And basically what Kevin said, he's much more well-spoken than I am, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment?
Can I ask Chris if he put his information on the...
Chris, did you put your information on the sign sheet?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the next agenda item, unless council has any comment, public comment. Communications written.
First one is a, a information flyer about the Community Mental Wellness and Resilience Act of 2023. There's a congressional briefing on this act, or on this H R thirty seventy-three, this Thursday, July twentieth, noon to one. The link, or the information, is in, in that flyer. We can post that to our website as well, but we just wanted to make you aware of this opportunity to learn more about this pending bill, by looks of things.
Okay.
There's no council action requested. The next item is a, is a proposed detours regarding the courthouse retaining wall project. Our staff in Public Works is looking at that. We'll probably make some comments to hopefully better accommodate some of the residents in that area and some of the businesses, but we are looking at that, and if council members have comments, please let us know.
By Thursday.
By Thursday, thank you.
Okay.
I believe that's all we have under written communications.
All right. Moving on to consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of council request specific items to be removed for separate action. So I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as listed.
I'll make the motion, Brad Bill, to approve general council meeting minutes and straight with McLaughlin.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Barbara. Any discussion? Nope. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackbill.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Moving on to reports, they're all in your packet. Does anybody have any questions for those reports?
The chief wanted...
Yeah, chief, are you, do you have anything?
I just wanted to know if anybody had any questions on the report that I submitted. And, real quick, Chris, I am also the farmer's market manager by de facto of the Belfont Borough website or the Borough Code. So I have traveled to Snowshoe and checked the farm, if you remember Ralph.
Yes, I do remember.
You can get with me, then. So I submitted my report, if there's any questions on that, feel free. I did tell you that we were going to follow up with another traffic study on Potter Street with the, with the device turned on stealth mode, and we've got, we were able to pinpoint the exact hour where the speeding occurs most, which is seven o'clock in the morning. Out of two thousand nine hundred seventy-three vehicles, the average speed was twenty-six point five, and prior to that, it was twenty-six point five with... So we're going to do it again with, it's on again, and we're going to put officers out there at seven o'clock and see if we can get that seven o'clock down speeds. So, all in all, it's not that bad of a, of an area. Like I said, twenty-five looks pretty fast on Potter Street. Now, I don't know if you've ever signed, it's right by J.J. Powell going out of town. So, if there's any questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you, have a good night.
Sure, thanks.
Introduce John to come up to the...
John. Well, I think I'm going to do Gina first.
That's all right.
Sure.
Office of Community Affairs, Gina, do you have anything for us?
I just wanted to remind council of the Safe Roots to Park sessions that are happening. You got this in your packet, but if you would like a hard copy, I have one here. Tomorrow's session from one to three will be held at one oh seven East High Street, and there will be representatives from various state agencies there. It would be great to see some council members, if you can swing it, wonderful. And then, also tomorrow evening, from five to seven, at the Gamble Mill will be a public engagement workshop, so that'll be similar to what was done today, but it will include, obviously, the public, and allow people that are interested in learning about this project to come and meet Vanessa and Natasha and learn a bit more. This is a really important project for Belfont. As was already mentioned, there is unprecedented state and federal funding for doing multimodal transportation, particularly in the state of Pennsylvania. It would be a shame for Belfont to miss out on this opportunity, and we have some really committed and passionate people in this community that want to see Belfont thrive and grow, and to see these projects come to fruition, including myself. So if you have any questions for me, or, you know, for Jenny Lynn, Catherine, Vanessa, Natasha, now, or throughout the process, please reach out to us, we'd be happy to talk to you, so...
You bet we will.
Thank you.
Anything else, Gina?
Nope, that's all.
Okay, thanks. Any questions for Gina, from council?
I had a good vacation.
Great, welcome back. Welcome back.
Thanks.
Our nuisance code, John Kabiba, is that correct, John? Welcome.
Welcome aboard. I'm John Kabibos, he just said, I'm the new code, nuisance code enforcement officer. I believe that's my title. Just still getting my feet wet. There's a couple of nuisances that we've already picked out, a lot of, you know, lawn issues now, especially with the rain coming and all that. So I'm starting to peel, you know, hit those houses and get those letters out, and get everybody to spruce up their, their places. Nothing much to report for me, like I said, still just trying to get my feet wet. It's been a whirlwind for two weeks, trying to put in as few hours as possible, but as many hours as possible to get the job done. So hope to have a better report for you next time, but...
Do you need any, is there anything that you jump out at, that you think you need to help better your...
Not yet.
...completion of your tasks from day to day?
No, not yet.
And I have some great people here that you get to work with, but, you know, speak up if there's something you think you need to help you do your job.
Absolutely.
Which we all know is very difficult.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. John, go ahead.
I'm not going to get too deep in this, but I know I've had a complaint out there providing the resident, that you have anything going on on High Street.
On High Street? Yes.
Okay.
High Street seems to be one of those places that have a few that we were looking at.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, John. Any other delays on reports? No? Okay. Current and old business. Vehicle and traffic parking ordinance. I need a motion, I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the vehicles and traffic parking ordinance draft as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Seconded.
Thank you, Barb. Is there a discussion on this?
Bernier made the motion, Dan seconded.
I hear no discussion?
Yeah, there should be discussion. I'd like to discuss the hours of, of parking meters.
Okay.
And I think the last time we met, we kicked it around a little bit, and I was considering more like a nine to six-thirty timeline through the week, and then Saturdays would pretty much stay the same, like they are right now, I think. So I'm just talking Monday through Friday.
Okay.
And I'll make that a motion to get any discussion, other discussion going with it.
What are the current times?
Eight to eight P M.
Eight to eight.
Correct.
And you're suggesting we change it from nine to...
Six-thirty.
But that, does that cost a lot of work to change that, or...
I think there's some signage, signage and meters and reprogramming.
Doesn't really seem worth it, does it? I mean, what's the, what's the reasoning? From eight to eight, or from nine to six-thirty, I guess is what I'm asking, just for my own...
Just if you, come in and see where people are parking and stuff, and if they, if they come in, like right now, if they come in at eight o'clock, everything's pretty much covered because stores are closing out there. But there's still not a lot of traffic, and most of it, I think, more or less gets a little lighter around the six to six-thirty time. And so, do you have residents who park on the streets sometimes, with if they, whether they have a parking permit, or they just want a, a parking area that's not being charged at that point? It gives, it gives residents a little bit of a break there. Something we talked about.
Yeah, we've had this discussion before, I think Mr. Stewart went into detail as to why we're, we, we'd like to see an exchange of, of parking for the downtown businesses.
What was happening a couple of years ago, when we went to eight to eight, which was a council decision, and Randy, you were here.
I know.
Businesses were not, were not, there was no parking spaces. We met in the south parking lot by the waffle shop. There was no parking whatsoever on the streets for businesses. Every space was filled. And what we gather, what was happening was, you know, the dance studios, the apartment rentals were occupying those spaces, because we stopped enforcement probably four-thirty or five on a regular basis. So there wasn't any places for business patrons to park on the streets. And over the years, we've been told, Belfont does not have a parking problem, they have a parking management problem. We were not managing the parking that we have. So the two-hour meters are meant for turnover. They're not meant to park at six P M. and leave at six A M.
I didn't say that either.
Well, I'm just saying, that, that was what...
If you're going to challenge me with it, I didn't say that.
That's essentially what was happening, Randy, and part of the committee recognized that. And I'm just saying what happened a couple of years ago, the committee recognized that, and council approved going to eight to eight for that reason. We can go back and go backwards, but the same thing's going to happen. We're going to have residents parking there that are not shopping, they're parking there because it's easy, it's right in front of their store, and we saw business owners parking in front of their own business because they could. So they take up the spaces, and the patron doesn't even get a chance. Instead of stopping in Belfont, they go on to the next town. That's why we changed it to eight to eight. But if council feels differently, wants to go back, we can, I mean, that's up to council. I'm just telling you what the...
My motion was not seconded, so...
Well, I'm just telling you what the reasoning was back then, a couple of years ago.
If I could just, I'd like to just add a comment, Ralph, and that is, is that, you know, when we changed this once, it takes, it takes the residents and people coming into Belfont a while to get, you know, to get educated on what our timeframe is. If we continue to just keep changing it back and forth, I think it will cause way more confusion than letting it as is, and then just let us work with the parking enforcement officers and, you know, we're not, you know, we're not monitoring sixty-four, sixty-three hours a week anyway.
Okay.
I, I like the eight to eight. I've been paying attention to that when I'm traveling, and there are, most towns also have eight to eight on their meters, which I had never thought about before, so it seems to be a pretty common, common practice, too.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor, is there a second to the motion by Mr. Brackbill? It should pass. I don't, I guess she's...
She went off, she couldn't hear.
Okay. Okay, so the motion has failed, so it's, what's now, we had a motion before, so no more discussion?
I just have one thing.
Oh, yes.
It's just a minor. I just happened to be flipping through it and noticed that Cowdrick still is listed as two different, lane and street or something like, in the...
We will make the correction. It should be lane, it's my knowledge.
I just happened to...
Thank you, we'll correct that.
As noted, Rita, thank you.
Yeah.
Roll call vote, Mr. Holderman, please.
Uh, Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackbill.
I'll vote no.
Uh, Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Next item on current and old business, rental housing code ordinance. I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the rental housing code ordinance draft as presented. Any motion?
I'll make that motion.
Deb Clayton has made the motion, is there a second? Hearing no...
We'd like to table this, if we have the time to table, so that we can go back and review some of these issues that these gentlemen have brought up earlier. If we're able to say, no, we don't want to do this one, and pick them out, what we, what we need and what we don't need, maybe that's helpful.
It sounds like it's possible, based on the comments about Harris Township.
Can we make a motion and second to then table for further review?
Yes. So...
So a motion to second, or to table, I'm sorry.
And a second?
Yeah.
Any discussion on the motion to table?
Yeah, this sounds like some pretty.
Just a vote, just a vote. There's no discussion.
I thought we discussed before we voted. No discussion on the table? Okay. I agree with what you're saying there. Roll call, please, for the table. So we're voting on, we're voting on to table the rental housing code ordinance until we can review it again carefully, and for me, take notes of some of the comments that were made tonight.
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Okay. Railroad Street Bridge Project, R O W Resolution Number 07172023-01, and Declaration of Taking by Eminent Domain. I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the Railroad Street Resolution for Condemnation of Real Property, Resolution Number 07172023-01.
I'll make that motion.
Second, Brackville.
Any discussion?
Yes, where exactly is this? All of the exhibits in our packet were blank.
This is over, near Sunnyside, when you overpass the old Belfont line. It's the bridge that a couple of years ago that the county got some funding for from PennDOT to work on, and we're contributing. There's a piece of property that they can't find anything on the title, so to be able to work on it, we have to take, put it in the borough's name.
The new bridge isn't going in the exact location of the existing bridge.
Okay.
So that's.
Thank you for that.
Yes.
For my own question, to make sure I'm clear on this. On the motion, it looks like there's two motions here.
It does, but I think the first motion takes care of it.
Okay, I wanted to make sure of that.
Yeah, I believe the first motion takes care of everything.
Two resolutions.
Yes, that's what I wanted to.
One motion.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure of that. Okay. Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Holderman.
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Thank you. Traffic Signal Maintenance Agreement, Resolution Number 07172023-02. Looking for a motion and a second to approve the Traffic Signal Maintenance Agreement, resolution that I just read to everybody.
I'll make the motion, Brackville.
I'll second.
Brackville and Barbara Dan. Discussion.
Is this for all of our lights, signal lights?
I think it's the ones getting, the ones getting the new pedestrian timers.
It's Allegheny and Bishop, Wilson and Bishop, and Lynn Street and Allegheny Streets. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. President, can I go back and, on the railroad street, you did the motion to approve the Railroad Street Resolution for Condemnation of Real Property, but there was another motion. Did we approve both of them?
The intent was to do both at the same time.
I just want to make sure for the record that we did.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Petition to vacate a portion of West Lamb Street. This is a public hearing that is tentatively scheduled for August 21st, 2023. Is there a time on that?
It'll be during the, it'll be during the.
The work session? Okay, so that will be.
And it's no longer tentative, it's confirmed.
Okay, so this is no action for council. It is confirmed that we will have a public hearing for the portion of West Lamb Street petition to vacate a portion of it. Okay. That's for the twenty-fourth.
Could you quickly explain what, where, and what?
Do you want, you can do.
This is across Thomas Street.
Okay.
West Lamb, you know, runs.
Beyond the Unimart, up the hill.
By the Gamble Mill, across Thomas Street, and then goes kind of up towards Half Moon Hill. In that area, a resident some time ago approached the borough, or petitioned the borough about taking ownership of a piece of the right-of-way. I believe it's primarily about parking, but the part of the process is to hold a public hearing.
Okay, I remember that now.
Okay, we'll move on to new business. Request for street closure, South Potter Street from the C V S to J.J. Powell on August 27th, 2023, from 1:00 P.M. to 4:00 P.M. for a Safe Routes Community Event. So I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the closure of South Potter Street.
Make that motion.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion.
I plan to talk with our chief of police just about the actual detour closure. It's mentioned here about, you know, by the former Sutton property and all of that. I just want to make sure that's a necessary, equal, easy area to turn around in. Typically, when we close off Potter Street, it's at the end of Potter Street, you know, either by High Street or by where you go up to Half Moon Hill on the other end of South Potter Street. Other than that, I have no issues. It's just a matter of where the actual detour is.
So we can conditionally approve this, based on, okay.
I just have one comment on this. With what we have going on on Water Street right now, that's a one-lane street at this point.
It'll be gone by then.
It should be gone.
August 7th?
I don't know.
August 27th, it'll be finished.
Fine, that's good.
They're projected to be done in early August.
That'd be great then, because we won't have a bunch of confusion.
They're forming the sidewalk now.
Motion was made by Clayton, seconded by Dan.
I think this is a great idea. My only concern would be the four or five residents who live at the far end of Potter Street that would be beyond this street closure, that they're still able to access their residence.
Well, you try to post a local traffic only or something like that.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
And Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Next item, new business, Farmer's Market Request to Move From Gamble Mill Parking Lot to Either Howard Street Between Allegheny Street and Locust Lane, or the Annex outside of Talleyrand Park, which is the figure eight, on Saturdays from May through October, 9:00 A.M. to 1:00 P.M. I'm looking for a motion and a second.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second.
Bernier and Clayton.
Discussion.
I agree that moving the Farmer's Market out of the Gamble Mill Parking Lot would give it more exposure. I'm very concerned about closing Howard Street. It would mean that the drive-up customers, the First National Bank, would give up their Saturdays, their Saturday access for six months out of the year. And that's, that's getting into people's personal financial business, and I don't think that's fair. I would like to see the two market groups work together to come up with a consensus that they can find a location, that they can work together. Also, we have two summer events that use that section of Howard Street for food courts, so there would need to be an alternate location for the Farmer's Market. And that might be problematic.
Other comments?
I would like to, I'd like to offer a table, to table this right now, so we can go back and talk to the Farmer's Market folks, representatives, and see what we can work out, trying to get this back onto the diamond area.
Okay.
That was a motion.
That was a, yeah, the table.
I would second that.
Any other discussion on the table? Motion. Roll call.
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Next item. Request for street closure, Smith Front requesting to close Dunlap Street on November 25th, 11:00 A.M. to 4:00 P.M., and December 9th and 10th, from 10:00 A.M. until 4:00 P.M. for vendors. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the road closure request for Dunlap Street. Do we still call it Dunlap Street?
Yes, for now.
It's not there? Okay. On November 25th, from 11:00 A.M. until 4:00 P.M. on the two dates, 9th and 10th of December. So is there a motion to do that?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Rita. Thanks, Randy.
Purnell.
I'll do make a comment, too, so people are aware that this isn't by the Gamble Mill, not up toward High Street.
Yes.
It's the parking lot in front of the Gamble Mill?
It's that little strip on Dunlap Street.
Okay.
I assume they've talked with the owner of the restaurant.
Well, I think there is some question on how much communication took place between the owner of the building and the restaurateur that's in the building. And maybe there should be a condition.
Conditional?
Yeah.
Approval with the okay from both the restaurant owner and the building owner?
Yeah.
So I'm looking, oh, I, maybe somebody should make that motion to conditionally approve? After that's been.
I'll make, I don't know, do we have to make a motion, or can we just add conditionally to it?
You can amend your, I mean.
You can amend your motion.
To add condition.
Yes, yes.
Conditional approval after we understand that both the owners.
Whatever's easier.
Both the owner and the landlord approve.
Agree as to what's going on.
Right? Is there a second? So that's the amendment to your motion?
I'll still second it.
Okay, more discussion.
Use all support you got.
Deb, I thought you had something.
From what I read in their request, it sounded as if they were only going to have artists set up and not necessarily food people. And we've done this before for Smith and Front. They have been collaborating with the Gamble Mill Group for these events, so.
Okay. Other comments?
Just, my curiosity, there's no, there's no application for this. Is that because it's a street closure?
Yes, it's a street closure request.
Okay, roll call.
Are we doing the amendment?
Oh, it's the, it's the new, he amended the motion. Kent, what did he do? What did he do, Kent? Do you understand the motion?
No. I also point out, in this person's request, is that this is not going to affect traffic flow or parking. So maybe we don't even understand what they're requesting. Because what, why would we even be questioning that?
The question is, does the landlord and the tenant are two different people? Is that correct?
Yes.
And the landlord was approved it, but the tenant, as we understand it, has not.
Or possibly may not have, whoever owns the restaurant.
Yeah.
And because before she had had food vendors there.
It says in the letter, in the last sentence, "I have already spoken with my landlord, and he is okay with the closure and vendors."
Right, that's the landlord. And from what I understand, the landlord is different than the restaurant owner.
So we're just covering, we're covering the bases by making sure that both parties know of the closure, right?
Who is, what party is Stacy then, who wrote the letter? Is she?
She's another tenant.
Good lord, that didn't clear up, did it? I hope nobody's watching. That's my answer, Mr. President.
Okay.
I mean, maybe Stacy is the other party needed in this discussion.
We have a motion on to approve or not approve?
I'm ready to go.
I'm ready to go.
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
And Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Great, thank you all. Last item. Did I miss one?
We had their recommendation from the fire department.
Yes, we had.
Oh, that's right. Could you read that one? Because I didn't write it down.
Randy, you can go over it.
So basically, I gave you the highlights of this at the beginning of the meeting, so I'm going to just read this off. The Belfont Fire Department Executive Committee requests that the Belfont Borough approve the recommendations of Action One and Action Two listed below. Action One, the consensus of the Belfont Fire Department Executive Committee is they have Chief Lor Point Logan, Chief Bobby Salvanes, and Undine Chief Mark Riddella work together during the period of July 17th, 2023, to July 1st, 2024, and have the authority to sign and approve invoices for payment by the finance director. Actor Two, Action Two, is Tim Schruffler and John Hart will review the qualifications for the Belfont Fire Chief and report back to the Belfont Fire Department Executive Committee during the period of July 17th, 2023, to July 1st, 2024, and will also do a relook at Chapter 35, which is the guidelines for the executive committee. That's my motion.
That's the motion?
Yep, that's the motion.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion.
So basically, that's just giving the leaders.
The company chiefs.
To lead, to lead.
To lead, yes.
Right now, we have no chief, so they're going to, any other discussion? Roll call.
Yes, Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Randy.
Yep, thank you.
Councilmember comments for the good of the order. Kent, for the good of the order.
I have a trivia question.
Oh, yeah, great.
You forgot.
Super. Well, you weren't here on time.
Who can tell me, anyone in the room, who can tell me what the nickname for the state of Nevada is?
The Golden Nugget State.
It's an excellent guess. The nickname for Nevada. Nobody, huh? It's the Silver State, the Silver State. And the capital of Nevada is?
Reno.
Reno.
That's incorrect.
Oh, it's, it's that other.
It was a destination in the movie Con Air. Carson City. Carson City.
You stumped us again.
A book written by kids, just letting you guys know.
This is supposed to be Pennsylvania.
Well, it wasn't.
That's okay, Kent.
It was still a good one.
Yes, it was.
Made you think and smile, and that didn't happen very much. Well, it did a couple times tonight.
You still won't use my, who was the first NFL football player?
Well, who's Stacy?
I don't know.
That would have made things easier if we knew who that was.
Any other, anything else?
No, sir.
Any?
Nothing today. I have nothing today.
Come on.
That was a tough meeting to run, and you did a good job.
No.
There was a lot going on.
I'm going to steal his thunder.
No.
Because I just welcomed back.
Thank you.
We missed you.
Thank you.
I didn't call you, I didn't email you. I'm very proud of myself.
That's good. Yeah, thank you.
So, but it's good to have you back.
Thanks, nice to be back.
Anything else?
No.
I have nothing.
I'm just happy to.
Randy?
Springfield Creek Watershed Meeting here tomorrow night, I'm sorry, Wednesday night, 7/19/2023, here in Council Chambers, so if the residents are interested in coming down to the Watershed Meeting, we'll be here from 7:00 to 8:30.
Bring your paddle, right? Watershed. Deborah?
Yes, is there a projected start date for the courthouse project?
Not yet. They're still working out those details.
Okay, thank you.
Rita?
I don't have much, but I'll just promote the Sound of Freedom movie again, since